Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, February 19th, 2013. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We move on to the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Thank you very much. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Logan. Holy smokes, where did that come from?
Two years ago.
Mayor Given, I move that the minutes of the city council meeting held February 4th, 2013 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition under number eight, eight point one. It's a recommendation to the Aqua Terra Board and eight point two, the competitive sports and Grand Prairie Airport Commission appointments.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. So the agenda with the addition of those two items. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to the delegation portion of the agenda. We have one piece of scheduled business today to make a recognition of long-term community volunteers with our annual George Repka Award. Since 1987, the George Repka Outstanding Achievement Award has served to recognize individuals who significantly contributed in a voluntary capacity to the improvement of the quality of life within our community in the areas of recreation, culture, or social services. The award was named after George Repka, a former mayor of the city, who himself made a significant contribution in terms of time and effort to Grand Prairie. Previous winners have included Perky McCullough, Roy Borstad, Isabel Campbell, Doug Clarkson, Ernie Radburn, Bill and Margaret Bose, Jenny Tietro, Marv Byrd, Patricia Larter, Kathy Harper, Doreen McDonald, Steve Cooper, Mike Townsend, Bob Normandow, Doreen Latham, Oscar Blay, Ray and Joan Jobertie, Dale Williams, Wally Stokes, Linda Smith, Lee Goldie, Travis McNally, Gordon and Hazel Bloomfield, Jerry Partician, Lynn and Donna Coulter, and most recently, Dan Gorman. It's my honor this evening to recognize two more citizens of Grand Prairie who have given a longstanding voluntary service to the community. On behalf of council and the citizens of Grand Prairie, I'm pleased to be able to present the George Repka Outstanding Achievement Award to Mr. Jim Brooks and Mrs. Sharon Brooks. Before I ask Jim and Sharon to come forward, I'd like to say a few words about their contribution to the community. When I went back there, they said, "We don't know why we're being recognized for this." And I said, "Well, let no good deed go unpunished. You help a community for a long time, and eventually somebody's going to recognize you for it." Jim and Sharon Brooks have been volunteering in our community for well over 20 years. The majority of their efforts have been at the Grand Prairie Museum. However, Jim is also involved at the Grand Prairie Live Theater, the Ovation's Dinner Theater, the South Peace Regional Archives, and the Heritage Discovery Center. In the early years of the Grand Prairie Museum, Sharon was one of the major forces behind the paper collections records and did most of the hand-drawn pictures for each of the artifacts in the collection, at that time putting in many, many hours. She continues to help with many different tasks in the collections department, and she and Jim are always a part of the spring work beat to get the Heritage Village ready for visitors. Sharon has also assisted the South Peace Regional Archives with different research projects over the years. Jim is a retired certified electronics and communications technician who received his training in the Canadian military. For the last twenty-some years, he's taken his skills and expertise to the next level by enthusiastically giving back to his community and inspiring others to follow in his footsteps. Each and every day, Jim makes himself available to the museum repairing buildings, artifacts, exhibit construction, restoration work, and everything else asked of him. In 2005, the museum completed a major expansion that included a completely rebuilt main gallery. Jim worked for five days a week for four months on the completion of the new gallery exhibits and was instrumental in ensuring it opened on time. Jim volunteers with the different theaters, working on set production, lighting, and anything else that he might be asked to do. The Real Shorts Film Festival also benefited from his time and expertise. The South Peace Regional Archives and the Heritage Discovery Center benefit from his skill for repairing ailing equipment. Jim and Sharon Brooks work quietly in the background with no expectation of recognition. Our community's been changed for the better because of their unwavering commitment and leadership. They're an inspiration and teach us that one person or a couple of people can have a major impact on his or her community. Jim and Sharon have demonstrated a legacy of long and outstanding service to the community, and I, along with members of council, would like to thank you and give you our congratulations for your service. Thanks so much. Jim and Sharon, would you come up and join me at the front? I'd also like to recognize Randy Repka, who's a member of the Repka family. They do us the honor of sharing the award with us each and every year that's in their family's name. And so Randy, would you come up and help me present the award?
So we'll give you the easy one to handle first.
Get out of the picture.
John, get out of the picture.
I was in all those last classes.
Get out of the picture.
This is okay. She's sitting down. But you were standing.
Two representatives you have pictured.
Last forever.
to the community. We certainly appreciate it. So this is the delegation portion of our agenda. It's an opportunity for anybody to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. I see that there are some folks in the crowd, and so if there's anybody that'd like to come and address council, now's an opportunity to come forward to the presenter's table and introduce yourselves. I see someone coming forward. Please make yourself up.
Be nice, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Elaine Gero, and I am the Peace Region Economic Development Alliance Chair. And I wish to present to the Grand Prairie City Council a concern that the PRA executive have with regard to a recent letter we received from the city council advising us that the city would be withdrawing from PRA effective March 31st, 2013. As you're all likely aware, PRA has been in existence for more than 10 years, and during that time has contributed greatly to the economic well-being of the Peace Region and more specifically, the city of Grand Prairie. This was achieved by the collaboration of some 25 municipalities, two Community Futures, two colleges who have worked together to advance the region. We have worked on numerous projects, including PERMA, which 72% of the members came from the city of Grand Prairie. P2P, unmanned vehicles reel-to-reel, and numerous workshops and seminars, many of them held right here in Grand Prairie. Perhaps our most aggressive project was the development of the Center for Research and Innovation, which was created by PRA through the Innovation Network, a project PRA has worked on since its inception and until it was assumed by the Grand Prairie Regional College under their mandate two years ago. I am comfortable in stating that if it had not been for the work of PRA and 25 municipalities, CRI would not be here today. This was done with considerable work and cost by PRA and all of its members. In fact, in the last three years alone, $597,031 was channeled to CRI and its projects, including an injection of more than $45,000 to the Grand Prairie Regional College in administration fees alone. This does not include all the other projects PRA has worked on to the benefit of the city of Grand Prairie. Grand Prairie's investment in PRA is $25,000 per year. This $600,000 is an eight-time return investment of Grand Prairie's membership fee in the last three years. If the average Grand Prairie taxpayer pays $2,500 in property taxes, then that return is equivalent to what 210 homes on your tax roll paid in property taxes are on an average of 70 homes per year. In fact, PRA's cash injection into the CRI over the past three years is double the entire membership fee Grand Prairie has paid in the course of its membership since PRA's existed. While the CRI is important, PRA would not have unfunded it to the extent if it had not felt that way. Its impact is truly only in the Grand Prairie area. The termination letter PRA received stated that the city of Grand Prairie will focus on regional economic development through the CRI, the Community Futures, and the Pipestone Museum. As a board member of Peace River Community Futures, I can tell you that the Grand Prairie CF only serves up to the north boundary of the county of Grand Prairie. The balance is Peace River. And while PRA has supported the Dinosaur Museum and will continue to support this exciting project, it too is based in the vicinity of the city of Grand Prairie. The reality is that the city of Grand Prairie pulling out of PRA sends a message that while they are grateful to PRA and 25 municipalities that helped fund the creation of the CRI, all the projects that benefit the city and the city will not reciprocate the regional spirit displayed by the municipalities around it. The financial investment of all these communities is to the benefit of Grand Prairie is important, but you cannot forget the value of working together in advocating for the north. Should the government of Alberta impose a sales tax, it would be Grand Prairie that would suffer from the loss of B.C. shoppers as well as an investment in the region. When Grand Prairie wants to see federal expansion through the introduction of the Canadian Broker Services and a full-service passport office or a brokerage for an international good, they turn to their neighbors for support. I am here today not to ask you to reconsider. I am, however, here to ask how you came to that decision despite the magnitude of the investment that PRA and its members have directed to the city of Grand Prairie. You feel you have not benefited from your membership. Your letter stated in the letter from the Grand Prairie City Council gave, it was under careful consideration. I would like to ask your council, considering your municipality-appointed rep has not been to a management board since January 28th, 2011, what was the careful consideration so that I can share with our membership so that no one else feels that they have not benefited from PRA?
Thanks very much for your presentation. I don't know if the gentleman had anything to say or if they wanted to introduce themselves. Maybe if we could just get their names as well.
Ron Longton, Mayor of Village of Berwind. I sit on the Executive Board of PRA.
Thanks, Ron.
Evan Slavoy, Councilman with Northern Sunrise.
Thanks very much. Appreciate having you here and appreciate the presentation and the concern. I can speak on behalf of council when I say that at the start of this term, as council came in focused on finances, we asked administration to examine all organizations that were external to the city in which we had a membership. Through the course of that, we identified a number of different organizations where our membership has changed, where we've had a relook at the ability of the organization to meet the objectives that it had stated. And I think specifically in the case of PRA, there's a lot of concern around the provincial government withdrawing its investment in the RAs. My understanding is that there have been others across the province that have recently ceased activity, and we felt that the city of Grand Prairie had its best opportunity to make investments in economic development through a different model. Certainly, we still look at every opportunity to participate regionally, but we feel that particularly with the loss of the provincial funding and that support from the province, that PRA wasn't going to be the best investment of our city taxpayers' dollars.
Okay, so I beg to differ. If that was your concern, we received $100,000 from the province, and we are guaranteed funding to 2014. And the government has already told us that economic development is a major priority with the government. We sit and we meet with the ministers, and if you had given us a call, we would have told you that in our strategic plan, we will be self-sufficient in three years. Government funding is always a pleasure to get, but we now are doing work for municipalities at a better rate. And I really, truthfully wish that if that was your concern, that you would have contacted myself, which you know who I am, and you would have come to us first instead of surmising something that is not correct. Some of the RAs have so chosen not to go forward, but they didn't do anything anyway. Blunt. They didn't. We have now had members of very large municipalities that are joining PRA because we move forward. But having said that, if we aren't moving forward at the rate that you wish us to move forward, I would have appreciated some consideration in coming to our executive board.
Well, we certainly appreciate the conversations that we've been able to have with your executive director over the last while. We appreciate now that the organization has one in place, that that'll be a benefit to the organization. And the opportunity that we had to give a presentation about the plans of the organization at a public committee meeting within the last six months or three months was, I think, additional information that council based their decision on. But I guess if you're looking for the why, I think that's the city of Grand Prairie's answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for making a presentation. Appreciate you taking the time to be here. This is still the public delegation portion of our agenda. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak to council on any community-related matter? I see somebody else, and they're moving up to the front. Come on down and have a seat and introduce yourself.
Carl Gongi.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you. Thank you, everybody, for having me here. Not a public speaker. Not as prepared as she was us, for sure.
Hey, Carl.
Just, my fence has been spray painted numerous times in the past. I'd say a year. I've repainted it, I'd probably say, six times, and it's a stucco fence, so it's a special paint. It costs a lot of money, and it's on a city easement. Just wondering what I could do or what is the solution to this. I have talked to crime prevention and stuff like that. They're just giving me the runaround, so.
Okay. So I guess the first thing that I do is look to the Director of Community Safety to see if we have any additional options. So you say you have worked with crime prevention, because my understanding was that they, through their annual graffiti cleanup, have some funds to be able to purchase paint and that kind of thing.
What they do is just give you gloves and stuff, and you have to provide your own paint and everything like that. So it's still on my tab. What I'm asking, actually, what I'm asking is if we could get some lighting or something in there, because it's just repeatedly happening.
Okay. So Director Walker, I don't know if you have a comment on that or if you have a...
Well, I think we could certainly look at options of lighting. I'm not sure of the area that you're speaking of.
9506 114th Avenue. That's the house address.
Okay. I guess the other opportunity we've seen work in some areas is to use, actually to use graffiti ourselves. And so it depends on what you want on your fence, you know, and how you paint it, so.
I have talked, when Rhonda was, I don't know if she's still there.
No, she's back to her regular apartment.
Sorry, Carl. Just get your, we kind of do it so that you're talking through me and then over to them.
Okay, sorry.
Go on this way. No worries. So go ahead. You're saying?
I have been talking with Rhonda before, but then she moved from the position. I didn't have a problem since, but then last night, they came and graffiti again. And it's kind of getting a pain in the butt, so it's getting expensive, too.
Fair enough. Well, we appreciate your raising the issue. This is the whole reason why we have a crime prevention department, and we do have a specific focus on graffiti. The way our agenda typically works is we deal with delegation presentations at the end, so if there's sort of, council has an action coming out of this, which I imagine there might be, that's when we deal with it. I do see that there's a few folks that are in the queue that might like to ask you questions. Some of the council members have questions for you, so we'll give them an opportunity to do that. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Carl, I've gone to a few of the graffiti wipe-offs they've done, and they had to rub it really hard, and it didn't really come off. And I like your suggestion, and I know we're going to be later on, but I've noticed an up to graffiti on different areas of the city lately, the last year and a half, two years. So it is an issue, and I hope debating it here later in council about this as well, because I think just giving you gloves is probably not the way to clean it up.
Yeah, especially on, I guess it's private fences, and it's a stucco fence, so you do need special paint to paint on stucco. It's not just a wood fence. And I'm the only one that's getting hit in my neighborhood. So, and there is another easement like that, too, up by Crystal Park School. It's kind of the same thing, sidewalk in between, and there's nothing going on there. So, but lighting in that area would really help out. If that would be an option, that'd be really great.
Okay. I see a couple others that wanted to ask questions as well. I see Counselor Rice.
Okay, and I guess my question had to do with the lighting. You say there's no lighting on that particular easement?
Absolutely not. It is pitch black there.
Okay, so would that be, like, how much lighting do you think would act as a deterrent? One light?
That'd be, that would be more than what's there.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
And I see Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. First of all, I really applaud you for coming and addressing your concern here. We don't get to see many of you guys too often, so it's nice to see somebody that really cares about their community. And is it, like, is it the same artwork all the time? If it's in the same spot, most likely it could be the same.
This time was different. Last night was different artwork, yeah. I do have pictures. I have brought it to the RCMP through the call center. I'm going to bring them pictures and bring some to the crime prevention that I have been in touch, but it's just starting to really get expensive on my part.
Well, you're doing the right thing by, you know, recovering it right away and making sure that they're doing the best you can to help us, help you deter the graffiti. So good job, and we hope we can help you out.
Thank you.
Carl, I don't see any other questions. Anybody else signed up to ask questions for you? So unless there's anything else that you want to say, we really appreciate you making your presentation. Okay? As I said, we deal, so we've got kind of an agenda of stuff, and we deal with the delegation portion at the end. You're more than welcome to stay. I can't sort of predict how long the meeting will go and how long it might be till we get there, but you can be in contact with the city afterwards. And what I would do in any case, I'd maybe just ask you as you go by to leave your contact information with Director Walker there that was speaking. And then that way, if you do have to leave, we'll be able to get ahold of you afterwards, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks very much. So as I said, this is the delegation portion of our agenda. Opportunity for anybody to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We've had a pretty diverse lineup tonight, and it looks like that's probably the end of it. And so, but do encourage the community, if they have an opportunity or a need, to come and speak to council. We do have that opportunity every council meeting. So I'll close the delegation portion of the agenda. We do move on through public hearings, which we had none, unfinished business we had none. That takes us into reports and item eight point one, Aqua Terra Board Appointments. Counselor Rice?
Sorry. I would move that council direct the mayor to approve that Jim Smith, Dave Verness, and Chris Lebasier be reappointed to three-year terms to the Aqua Terra Utilities, Inc. Board of Directors effective the 2013 Aqua Terra AGM. In speaking to it, this will be their second term. Some of those terms were fairly short, so that's my motion.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So this is direction to the mayor to vote the city shares at the Aqua Terra AGM, so that's why this motion takes that format. Any further discussion and debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Item eight point two, committee appointments. Counselor Otul, would you like to make the appointment for the Combat sports commission?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. As part of the Combat sports, we chose to use Michelle Sharma, and I recommend that we go with that. She's a resident of Sexmo Pharmacy.
Okay. Thanks very much. Now, we have a term recommendation on there. Typically with these, we have a recommendation of a term. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if anybody has that at hand.
I got it right here.
Thanks, Counselor Rice.
Audrey Scott.
Sorry, Ms. Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The appointment for Mr. Sharma would be for the remainder of a term ending December 31st, 2013.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ms. Turner. So the motion would be to appoint Sharma, as noted from Ms. Ross, to the remainder of a term ended December 31st, 2013. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And Counselor Otul, I think you also have the airport commission. Except for that one, we have one vacancy for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2015.
Thank you very much. I recommend that Gord Greeden be appointed to the Grand Prairie Airport Commission for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Otul. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I believe that handled all of our additional reports that came on tonight. And that takes us into committee business. Item nine point one, 100th Anniversary Committee. Counselor Rice?
I would move that council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held February 4th, 2013. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Hundredth Anniversary Committee meeting held February fourth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions, anything out of place? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, did anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Rather exciting. Fire Chief Lemieux attended our meeting, and he has managed to get the Alberta Fire Chiefs Association 2014 Conference here in Grand Prairie. There'll be approximately five hundred registrants, and we'll be working with them. We had a couple of our new committee members join us for the first time, and we thank council for those appointments. Excellent additions, the history book is coming along. Sue Pharaoh Haller has been chosen as the writer. Counselor O'Toole is exceeding expectations as he plans our hundred days of events and some rather unique and exciting ideas. We wanted the hundred days of events to be something different. The homecoming event, Counselor Gustafson has his committee, and they seem to have it well in hand. It's very gratifying, we sent out thirty-two letters to various area businesses asking if they might be interested in sponsorship activities, and advising them that if they were, we would prepare a list of menu items, if you will, which we're beating on Mr. Hollinger to get ready, and we'll be taking and sitting down. The response was immediate and just amazingly gratifying, so we're moving along.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Time is winding down to twenty-fourteen. Item nine point two, the Public Works Committee, Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held February fifth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Everything looks to be in order and in place? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, I understand nine point two point one, you're going to ask Counselor Rice to make that motion.
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Rice?
Hey, I would move that council adopt the Ninety-second Street Functional Study. And in speaking to it, the functional planning study of Ninety-second Street from Sixty-eighth Avenue to One Hundred and Sixteenth Avenue is based on the city's transportation master plan that was developed in 2009, and this sets forth a basis for future detailed design and construction staging to the ultimate build out of the roadway. And this is all projected around a ninety thousand population horizon. There were two open houses held, and dual left-turn accesses between Park Road and Ninety-second Avenue, as well as restricted time-of-day parking along Ninety-second Street, near the intersection of Ninety-second Street and One Hundred and Fourth Avenue, where some concerns that arose at that, at those open houses. And the city is still monitoring traffic at the Ninety-second Street and One Hundred and Eighth and One Hundred and Eleventh Avenue intersections. So this is a long way out, this is, as I said, won't proceed till about a ninety thousand population, so.
Thanks very much, Counselor. I think it has up to a ninety thousand population, a couple of different horizons within that, yeah. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice.
It's not something that starts work this spring, is what I'm saying.
Discussion or debate, Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe the council needs to be just a little more consistent in our turning lane procedures. Some we turn, some we don't. I'm also not in a position to slow development or deny access to public property. Also, the ninety thousand population horizon for me is an undetermined number. It's based on over a five-year span. I think we could drastically narrow that down to a little sooner or later. Also, the safety and crash statistics, I believe, need to be presented. That will most likely encourage a more confident decision for myself. I also want to ensure undeveloped property builds, development, and finishes the subdivisions. Also, in addition, the open houses here were done in conjunction, and the comments were unclear, as stated in the report. I also believe we're heading in the right direction for this, however, I will not be supporting it at this time.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Gustafson, nine point two point two.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council eliminate, eliminate the name Centennial Park from Musquesee Park signage as it applies only to a portion of Musquesee Park.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Anything further to say about that, to introduce it?
Yes. Thank you. The name Centennial Park refers to the area of Musquesee Park that is the home of the pavilion, the museum, lawn bowling, amphitheater, pool, playground, and spray parks, and skateboard park, and the parking lots. It approximately boundaries, its approximate boundaries are One Hundredth Avenue to the south and Reservoir Spillway to the north, and the residential neighborhoods to the east and west. For all intents and purposes, it is a park within a park, a node of the greater Musquesee Park system. Basically, this was back in, I can't recall what year, but a long time ago, we named a portion of the Centennial, of Musquesee Park, Centennial Park, and somehow the, we signed it, nineteen sixty-seven, actually, we signed it at the entrances to Musquesee Park, so it's rather confusing for, especially anybody from out of town looking for Musquesee Park. People actually went into Musquesee Park asking where it is, and because the signs into our parks say Centennial Park. So for that reason, we are eliminating the name Centennial Park.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing no one ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, yes, I do, yes. We had a reservoir feasibility update. Yeah, we did, we did, very important, very exciting news. Mr. Richard Sally, our project technologist, reported to committee that, about the reservoir feasibility study that is underway, the project is underway, and the geotechnical analysis should be completed soon. This information will confirm whether islands can be built in the area rather than spending the money to transport that silt away. The further away, the more it will cost to clean up the reservoir. Environment Canada and Department of Fisheries and Oceans have been informed, but further discussion will be required after the geotechnical analysis is complete. So progress, but it'll still be a little while before we're able to really clean that up properly. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. That'll bring us to nine point three, and the Community Development Committee, Counselor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held February the fifth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also move council rescind motion nine point three point one of October first, 2012, tender T sixty-eight four thirty-seven dash twelve. Just to speak to that briefly, Mayor Given, there was some seasonal bad timing on this request, so the bid was withdrawn.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor Rice, discussion or debate?
Okay, so I'll be careful here, because this may be a legal matter, but can someone just say, "I submitted a bid, it was successful, I don't want to do the work because I made a mistake"? Isn't that a contract?
I'll maybe talk through that, Mayor Given, if...
I see the Director of Community Living has got a red circle on his microphone. Mr. Roth?
Your worship, there are certainly some legal matters that are being, that we have to consider at this. This particular issue, contractor has withdrawn their bid without getting into the legal technicalities. That's why we're coming forward to ask to have it withdrawn.
Okay, one more question, so. When we open a tender, this guy was number one, and next is somebody else that was slightly higher or something. Do we go to number two, or do we have to re-tender?
Mr. Roth, do you have information on that?
As I recall, this was the only bid, and the plan is to re-tender this fairly shortly.
Thank you.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm looking forward to the RFP going out on this, and starting the facility is starting to get worn down, and for the right time of doing it. Sometimes you can do things and pour concrete a lot better than in minus thirty, so I think it might be appropriate, the timing.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also move council approve policy two oh one, recreational fees and charges as per attachment A effective immediately. And just briefly, this rate, the rate increase was a slight adjustment, it's to our dry area. Dry arena space, it's the no ice space. It was just reflected a small adjustment in the, in the per hour.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. I just think this was adjusting an error where the youth rate was going to be higher than the adult rate, and it was sort of an oversight, is that correct?
Yes, you're correct, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any further discussion or debate on the motion, questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also approve, have council approve an adjustment to the 2013 operational budget to reflect an increase of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and one dollars and fifty cents for the Peace Library System per capita funding contract. And further, the adjustment for 2014 be referred to the 2014 interim budget process. It's pretty self-explanatory, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion or debate, I believe this relates to per capita increase, just because the city's population increased? Our contract says we pay them based on our population?
That's correct.
Thanks, Counselor Crokin. Discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Crokin, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, there was one other item. There was a presentation by Mr. Wallisian and Michael Wheaton, President of the Grand Prairie Tennis Club, and they had an extensive package that they presented us with. They want to get the refurbishment of the club's tennis courts by the Armory's just off Hundredth Street there. And they're a pretty exciting group, and they want to get it resurfaced and up and running this year.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. So we move on to Environment Committee, nine point four, Counselor Monroe.
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held February eleventh, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? If everything looks to be in order, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Monroe.
Thanks. I'll move that council approve policy one one three, idle reduction policy as amended. And just to speak briefly to this, as most of you may recall, we implemented the idle reduction policy across the city back in 2011. We, administration undertook a review of the policy with various managers throughout the organization and determined some minor changes. Some of those changes include changing the temperature from zero degrees to twenty-five degrees Celsius. Previous, it was minus ten to twenty-five degrees Celsius. Prohibiting motor vehicles and drive-through lineups, don't want to have any of our city vehicles in there. And then the exclusion of emergency vehicles, as I understand it, quite a few of our emergency vehicles need to maintain operation in order to keep the batteries charged, so that is why they would be excluded from this. We have, it looks like we have full support from administration and the management teams that they met with throughout the organization, so, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I think it's really important to stress that this is for city staff driving city vehicles.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Yeah, city vehicles are, or vehicles the city of Grand Prairie is paying for, if somebody's claiming mileage.
Absolutely.
Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll just also add that at this time, there is no bylaw that will be coming out of this any time soon anyways.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any further discussion and debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Monroe, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Certainly, we had a number of delegations come for the meeting. We had the Peace Airshed Association, or PAZA, came and gave us an update of the air monitoring situation within the Peace region. As well, we had a young man by the name of Matthew Chavano, who was at our last council meeting, came and presented to us, Aqua Terra was also present. It was, it was quite interesting to see some of the ideas that Matthew was bringing forward. I think they were fairly well received from Aqua Terra, as well as from the committee, and hope that he continues to brainstorm ideas on how we can reduce waste within the city. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. That brings us to item nine point five, which is just about our second-to-last item on our agenda. And Counselor Radburn, General Government Services Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the General Government Service Committee meeting held on February twelfth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve the 2013 communications plan. If I could just highlight the four goals and some of the highlights within the plan, Mayor Given, for council and for those who are watching. Four goals in the plan are to increase citizen engagement, to ensure the city has a positive image with all stakeholders, to ensure consistent and proactive external communication, to foster strong and effective internal communication. And some of the highlights that Mr. Hollinger presented in his report were, the plan includes actions, timelines, and measures. We're initiating monthly online newsletter. We're incorporating city matters into community connections. We're increasing the number of surveys to gauge resident opinions. We're promoting strong linkages between departments, and we're enhancing the use of communication tools such as YouTube. So those are just some of the highlights, but we had a look at it twice. One, we provided some feedback, David did some refining of the plan, and we were very comfortable with it at last committee meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Take a big breath here, there's a lot in motion. I would move council direct the mayor vote the city of Grand Prairie shares to provide consent to the board of Aqua Terra, declaring dividends with respect to the corporation's Class D preferred shares and Class H preferred shares, and to provide for payment of such dividends on or prior to March first, 2013, notwithstanding the stipulations in Articles eight and ten of the USA. We received a letter that informing us that the Aqua Terra Board had declared both mandatory and discretionary dividends payable to shareholders this year. It's for the last year, actually. A discretionary dividend of two point five percent of the value of all outstanding preferred shares were, I guess, recommended. Discretionary dividends require unanimous shareholder consent. This motion gives, Mayor Given, on our behalf, I guess, the direction in terms of voting for those shares. The letter also showed that we had mandatory, I guess, dividends of one million, six hundred and eight thousand, fifty dollars. Those are mandatory, and they came from, I guess, the, when Aqua Terra started, giving the city of Grand Prairie five percent of contributed assets at the time that Aqua Terra was incorporated. The discretionary dividends that I just mentioned, in terms of the Aqua Terra's board decision, come to a one million, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to the city. the city of Grand Prairie. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Councilor Rice?
What do we have in the budget estimated?
Yeah, actually, I asked, we asked Mr. Anderson that and it's about what we had in the budget. Very close, very close.
If I remember correctly, it was like sixty dollars difference or something like that.
I thought Susan might get to tell us good news.
Well, it is a bit of a circus, huh?
Yeah.
Little bit.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn, anything else from that set of minutes?
Two, two other, two other highlights that I would share. First of all, we received information that the two thousand thirteen Citizen Satisfaction Survey contract was going to Ipsos Reed. And this is a survey that cities undertake every two years. Talks about a number of issues, quality of life issues and communication, taxation, you name it, a broad range of questions. We use the survey as a key resource in the city's citizen engagement program, and it does inform us for business planning and strategic planning priorities, so we find it very useful. This will happen again, David, March. Typically, we've, this will be our third, I believe, and we've done it a consistent time a year, and it involves a phone survey of four hundred residents.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn.
And secondly, the, where council received a chambers, council chambers audio video upgrade, upgrade, update. Sharp's audio visual was the highest ranked submission, and I believe actually it's, I think, a May timeframe, so hopefully these upgrades will be completed by May. And the money is coming from the corporate IT initiatives capital budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Radburn. I believe that handled all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence tonight, so that takes us to the delegation, delegation business. I believe the George Repka word was, was handled and presented. The first, I guess, delegation was Ms. Gao from Prida. So we'd look for, Gero, sorry, excuse me, Gero. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that we accept the Prida delegation for information.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Looking for one more. Thank you, council. And that motion carries. And then we had our second delegation, Councilor Rice.
I would move that the issue of a light at that particular easement to be referred to whatever we're calling public works next week, and that they prepare a report regarding the costs and the potential for a light installation at that location.
Sure. Councilor Rice, I wonder would you be willing to maybe expand, broaden the scope a little bit, so the, a light and other options, addressing graffiti in that area?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's broad to give council, or admin as many options as possible. Councilor Augustusson?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Given. Last term, we, we started this graffiti program, and I'm not on protective services anymore, just so, I was wondering if somebody could light me on where, where we stand with that graffiti program. By email, if not tonight, short.
Okay. So an update on the graffiti program? I'm sure we can do that, and I see Director Walker nodding, Director Walker nodding his head, so we'll get an update on the graffiti wipeout program. And Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd as well like to have that update on the graffiti program and see actually if we just supply gloves, because I don't know if it should just be a protective service area, community growth and making your community stronger and wiping it out quickly would be very important. And sometimes when they do it on Culture Stone and that, it'd be pretty hard to fix, but a lot of these fences and power boxes, maybe the city can get after them more. I've noticed quite an increase in the last two years, and you can go in quite a few spots and see it. I mean, the trains are going to happen anywhere, but in our community, there's lots, so I don't really know if gloves are working, and I don't know if it should just graffiti stay in protective service anymore. It should be, maybe come to community growth or another area as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. So Councilor Rice's motion was to essentially refer the issue of a light and other options to deter graffiti in that specific easement to the appropriate standing committee.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion's carried. So I see Carl's still here. So Carl, it's going to one of our committees, we're going to talk about it more, but I imagine you may also hear from our administration in the interim as well. Okay. Thanks very much. I believe that handled all of our delegation business, and we go to council member reports. Councilor Rice, do you want to speak about, provide an AUMA update?
Well, I attended a utility consumer advocate board meeting. That organization continues to monitor the progress on the implementation of the recommendations coming forward from the Regulated Rate Review Committee. As I'm sure council is aware, the government supported thirty-one of the recommendations and held off on several others. It's still rather vague as to what they're going to do with the thirty-one recommendations they accepted, so I continue to study that as it could have a huge impact on, on the, the average citizen in Grand Prairie. Also continued work through AUMA with a grant given by the Minister of Environment to look at replacing all the street lights in Alberta with LED or similar lights that could cut the power costs of every municipality by as much as two-thirds, so that's kind of exciting. I attended the mayor's caucus, put on, in the MLA breakfast, put on by AUMA, and facilitated the discussion and recommendation on the need for municipalities to have the ability to expand the, the ways that they can apply for water licenses. And that's it.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor O'Toole, you had Disabled Transportation Society.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Today, we had our annual general meeting, and we had an election for two new appointees for the board and two reappointments. So I can proud to say that Jerry Napier is back, and so is Keith Bennett. And we, the two new appointees are Carol Ann Rutberg and Phyllis Cash. So they'll be taking part in, in our March meeting, and we'll appoint them to some opportunities and committees in that department.
That's great. Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you.
And I don't think there are any other external agencies, boards, and commissions reports, and if there weren't, then we would go to council roundtable with Councilor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. On February the seventh, I attended the Crime Prevention Awards of Appreciation and Success. Congratulations to all the winners and a great job and a great evening. Karen Garpey and her team had a very nice closing gift. I won't be late for anything now with that nice clock. On February the eighth, I was in Fort St. John bringing greetings from Mayor Given and council at their ice carving championship, and I just couldn't get our swan up there like, there's a Roger there that recognized me from our first time, and he said, what a great job we had on that swan on our very first trip, and we, we did a good job then, and we did a good job representing us this time, too, so they appreciate us coming up. On February the fourteenth, I attended the Passion Heart Award Luncheon, and congratulations again to all the winners, and especially to, to Jackie Aiken Kish for winning the Chris Henderson Award. On February the fifteenth, I attended the, in council chambers here, the Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards and Medals Presentation, and there is an awful lot of them, too many to mention, but they were online. But I want to mention one, and that's to Chris Adams, voted by his peers as firefighter of the year. Good job, Chris, and that's everything, Mayor Given.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Rice?
I want to say how proud I am that the city was awarded the premiers award for a healthy workplace. We were one of the five in an award of merit. The, it's part of the government of Alberta's government's Healthy You Initiative, and it, it honors employers who encourage their staff to make healthy eating choices and incorporate daily physical activity into their workday. And the honorees were selected based on their strategies, initiatives, policies, and programs that promote support and enhance healthy workplaces. And obviously, the city recognizes that wellness initiatives in the workplace increase morale, recruitment, retention, and staff engagement research has shown that when employees work with an organization that cares about their well-being, they are more likely to contribute beyond expectations. So proud of that award, and congratulations, Mr. Sherback and all your staff.
I believe the only municipality recognized this year with some heavy company like WestJet and some other well-known companies. Congratulations, Greg. Councilor Augustusson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the hundredth anniversary committee meeting and a subcommittee meeting, and I attended the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance Open House, and I just wanted to commend Councilor Dan Wong on all his hard work he does there, looking after our most precious resource. Thank you, Don, good, Dan, good job looking after us there. And I spent, I spent some time on our website reporting potholes, so I'll be watching those potholes to see how.
I'll fix.
You betcha. See, that's how it works. See, click, fix. So I fixed a lot of potholes last, last couple of weeks here, hopefully. And I'm also excited to hear about the annexation meeting that happened today, the, the progress report that, that we'll hear and then hear in the near future, how we're, how we're making out with our neighbors all around us. And tomorrow, I'll be attending the Growing the North Conference supper with the premier, so thank you very much, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Councilor Augustusson. Councilor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. On Tuesday, February fifth, I had my quarterly meeting with the city manager. We discussed many topics. Greg, thank you for the updates. I think he was almost, he almost chucked off everything on my list from last time, so that was pretty, pretty good. February seventh, I was at the Crime Prevention Evening of Success. February eighth, EMS Foundation Wine Fair. That's always a great event, and it is fundraiser for the EMS Foundation. On February twelfth, the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society met with some esteemed members from Environment and Sustainable Resource Development, Fisheries and Wildlife, and Alberta Land Management Departments to get feedback on our Wapiti Corridor Plan. February thirteenth, Mayor Given and I met with RCMP commanders to provide feedback on their strategic goals for the year. February fourteenth, I attended the annual Passionate Hearts Awards, and I want to also congratulate all the award winners. February fifteenth, the Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards and Medal Presentation, I was there as well, and again, congratulations to all the awards and medal winners. On Saturday, February sixteenth, I attended the Chinese New Year Celebration at the Golden Age Center hosted by the Chinese Association of Grand Prairie. I just wanted to thank President Guy Lee and his committee and, and Board of Directors for all the good work that they do. I know they're starting up their Chinese language school again. They had, they took a year off from that, trying to get instructors, and the program is up and running again, and it'll run for children ages four to fifteen. And that'll be held at the college, so if you're interested in learning Chinese, which is Mandarin Chinese, definitely get ahold of the association. Finally, this morning, I was at the annexation mediation meeting with the county and the city.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As well, February eighth, I was at the EMS Annual Wine Fair and Auction. Very excited to go there this year. Actually, it was the first year in three years I didn't lose my booklet to know which wines I truly enjoyed. But the number one reason to go to this event is to raise funds, and I believe they raised about fifty-eight thousand this year, and last year was about forty, so they did a very, very good job. And I also have to say kudos to all the directors on EMS Board, and of course, my wife's on there, it's Tina, so good job, you guys, very good job. As well, February twelfth, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Lunch, and I'm very proud of this. They're expecting to do this every two months or four months. It's a good initiative by council. Council should pat itself on the back on this. Development permits since we got in council are now are forty-nine percent faster being developed and processed. That's amazing news. That's a big, you got to congratulate development on that as well, and that was a directive of council that was speeded up. And then there was a question asked there about, well, it's got busy the last year, how you doing now? And it was up about twenty-five percent, and they're doing the same thing, forty-nine percent faster. And always looking to improve. Also, there was a question asked about hiring more inspectors, and of course, they're on top of it, and they're looking at having a few more inspectors in the spring to move it forward as the economy's picking up. That's another council directive. Very good job, council, and to the city staff. And there were some good things about codes that were brought up, about new codes and about pouring concrete in really cold weather, and as a carpenter, I know that there's been places where they poured it in minus twenty-five, minus thirty, and they poured, took the forms off the next day. And with very little rebar, you know how much strength you got in that foundation? None. So the codes are changing, they can't pour so, in such cold weather, and as well, they're looking at if they're going to have a basin sitting in the winter all night, or all winter in minus thirty, forty, they're going to have to cap it and put heat in it. These are codes that are coming from Canada, building codes Canada. And so I think this is very good initiatives and moves and to the development staff, good job, good kudos on the government noticing it. Number one investment for a family is their home, and if it's falling apart in the foundation, just imagine the cost. February thirteenth, I was at Community Futures Board Meeting, our annual board meeting, very well done. February fourteenth, I was at the seventh annual Passionate Heart Award Lunch, and I was, I felt like at home there. It was so red and colorful and, but the main thing was people being awarded the procedure and helping in the community for frontline workers, but it was very red in the room. And as well, I attended on February fifteenth for the GP Fire Department Award and Medal Presentation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. February fifth, I met with Debbie Normington, Grand Spirit Foundation General Manager on some Grand Spirit business. The seventh, I also attended the Crime Prevention Evening of Appreciation and Success. On the fourteenth, I had two, two, I guess, commitments at noon. One was the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Board Meeting, where we looked at the two thousand thirteen budget review, and then I whipped over and cut the last half of the Passionate Hearts Awards Luncheon. Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards and Medals Presentation on the fifteenth. And on the eighteenth, Muscat CP Park Family Day Activities. Don and I and our grandchildren took in the activities for an hour and a half at the, at Muscat CP Park, and really appreciated the staff's organizing and delivery of all the activities at, at that event. Hugely successful, hundreds of people. I was telling Mayor Given that, you know, we could have used a pavilion three times as large, and I'm still, we still would have been kind of sardined in there, but it just shows the, the interest of the park and the activities, and what a better way to spend Family Day. And today, I was a part of the annexation mediation session as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the sixth of February, I attended a tender opening, and on the seventh, I attended a meeting, Community Action to End Poverty, and I want to thank Lisa Watson for inviting me. I asked to be part of a committee that will be representing the city on a number of areas, and so I'm with that. Also, a very busy day, I attended the Philip J. Curry Meeting, and there was just some regular RFP negotiation type things we discussed there. Later that day, I filled your role and gave greetings on behalf of the mayor and council to the Crime Prevention Six Annual Evening of Appreciation and Success. Very well-turned-out event. On the eleventh, I also attended the park pavilion to visit the presentation on the Peace Watershed, and I got to admit that four o'clock, the place was almost completely packed. Lots of interest there. On the twelfth, I attended the Library Board Meeting, and shortly after that meeting, I attended the MMA, or Combat Sports Commission Training Clinic, and that was for the volunteers that'll be coming up for this event that's going to be held on Thursday and Friday. The weigh-in is on Thursday, and the event is actually held Friday at the Jackpot Bar and Grill. On the fourteenth, in the morning, I woke up fairly early and attended the Morning Mixer at Rainbow Automotive and met the new owners and at Rainbow Automotive and met the new owners and some chamber members there as well. On the seventh, once again, I was fulfilling your role as mayor and gave deputy mayor and gave presentation and speech to the Passionate Heart Awards Luncheon. And then once again, I wanna thank Lisa Watson for doing a great job there. On the fifteenth, I attended the Archives Meeting and on later that day, I attended the Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards and like it was said in the media and around the table today, very deserving awards and kudos to all those that got the awards. There was also this, the Diamond Jubilee Awards presented by our MP, Chris Workington. And I also wanna thank MLA Everett McDonald and Minister Wayne Drysdale for attending there as well. I had, also wanna thank Justin Monroe for taking over my role of opening tenders that day, or opening tenders. On the sixteenth, I attended a lifetime award from the Kinsman, for Edith Gillette and the Proclamation of Kins Day of the seventeenth of this following week. And today I attended the annual DDS Meeting, Disabled Transport Society and Growing the North Meeting, I was there for an hour this afternoon before the meeting that we have here. Taste of the north. There's communities represented from Valley View, Beaver Lodge and I'm trying to think where else. The Honey Place, Flair and Gee. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also attended the Home Builders Association Technical Luncheon with Councilor McLean and I believe that most of the home builders that were there are quite thrilled actually that there's been a reduction in the permit times and as I understand it, they're hoping that those times, they'll still be able to improve upon them, so, so that's, that's really good. Attended briefly the Fire Department Awards and Medals Presentation, I think everyone, most of them have been covered off there and also did the tender opening for the destruction of the bleachers at the South Bear Creek way to that day. Did the Rotary Ski Weekend in Jasper and that was, that was a Family Day event for us and then the annexation meeting today. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor Rice?
Not sure if this one should be to Councilor Monroe, but, okay, so those bleachers were destroyed, obviously, because they were, became a safety hazard. Were they their bleachers or ours and if they're ours, will there be something in the budget to replace them?
Maybe I'll direct that to the community living director. Ms. Roth?
Your worship, there is, there was actually three tenders, some were, some were for field upgrades and replacement or repairs, destruction of bleachers and also replacement of bleachers. Those were three tenders that were issued and all came back at roughly the same time.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much. So, my opportunity, I'll try to be brief. I, on Monday, Tuesday, February fifth, I attended a real talk presentation that was a session put on for city employees. Our staff brought in a facilitator who was able to work with our staff to bone up some of their skills on internal relationships and working relationships. I think these types of events and programs are why the City of Grand Prairie won our Healthy Workplace Award. It shows that the City of Grand Prairie is concerned about employees in all aspects of their life, of their life and that enables them to be better employees, so I wanna thank city staff for providing that sort of opportunity to our colleagues. On Wednesday, the sixth, I attended here at City Hall at a preliminary meeting for potential sport council steering committee. A number of interested parties turned out from a variety of different sport organizations, other municipal governments and private sector, so that was encouraging to see. And then on Thursday, the seventh, I headed down to Edmonton for the Northern Alberta Mayor's and Reeves Caucus hosted by the City of Edmonton, Mayor Mendel. The focus of the agenda, the first half of the day was on seniors issues and the Associate Minister of Seniors for the Alberta Government, Honorable George Vanderburgh was there to present. He presented about a new program that the government's gonna be launching, I believe effective with this budget, that allows seniors to defer their property taxes and so seniors who are currently living in their home, who are finding property taxes to be a difficulty or a burden, have the ability to essentially defer those payments until such time as they sell their house in the future. Basically addresses the situation that many seniors have where they are house-rich and cash-poor, I guess is how the saying goes, and allows those seniors to live in their own home longer than they might be able to otherwise. In those situations, the government of Alberta will forward the property taxes to the municipality and then will be responsible for collecting those when it comes due. There was also a presentation on global age-friendly cities and then a very interesting presentation from the University of Alberta on their planning program. They're looking at launching a planning program based on the feedback of municipal governments across the province and Dr. Robert Summers, the director of that planning program, highlighted that they're interested in opportunities for internships, so I gave my card and we probably have some of those around here. And he also highlighted that they're looking at doing partnerships with educational institutions and on his slide was a picture of Grand Prairie Regional College, so I took that to be a fairly good indication that they're looking at our region and region in the north for potential partnerships for this planning program, so obviously a good thing knowing how in-demand professional planners are for municipalities. The following week, I attended in Edmonton for the AUMA Mayor's Caucus. I was there for the MLA's breakfast, had an opportunity to sit with the government whip, Steve Young, and discuss some of the government program. Council needs to know that Councilor Rice earned her three years of salary and wages by being the only person in the crowd that could directly challenge the Minister of Municipal Affairs when he was on the podium to ask him when the government would take this, take the step to intervene when municipalities are unable to reach agreements and Councilor Rice suggested that at some point that needs to happen and the minister was taken aback and laughed and suggested that if Councilor Rice was fifteen years younger, and then he stopped, and so I'm not sure what he was gonna say, but there was nobody else in the crowd that could've asked such a direct question and really suggested that the government needed to do that and so, Councilor Rice, I just wanted to make sure that all your colleagues know, good job that you do for us. The next day was the Mayor's Caucus meetings for municipalities of Grand Prairie size. Agenda items included police funding as well as the Municipal Government Act Review, which are both very significant issues that we've discussed at council and good to see that our provincial association is focused on those issues. I was there for some of the discussion about, around police funding the day before with some of the smaller municipalities and I was surprised at the number of communities that don't currently pay, a number of urban municipalities that don't currently pay who understand that it's a reasonable thing to do. And so that was, that was good to see, that was something I was unclear about, so I think there's largely support across the majority of urban municipalities across the province that that system needs to change. And finally, today, I was at the annexation mediation meeting as mentioned by some of the members of council and this afternoon I met with the Aquatera Board and the Minister of Environment and Sustainable Resource Development to talk about a number of Aquatera items, including their long-term diversion license, which council knows they've been lobbying for as well for a long time and I believe that that was all the items and if there's nothing else, then we'll call our meeting adjourned.